I bring this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is August 6, 2012. For the invocation, I'm going to call on Commissioner Larry Yoder and for the pledge of allegiance, Vice Chairman Berkey Jennings. If you would, please rise.
Our kind and gracious most heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that you have given us throughout this country that we're able to gather as we do tonight. Lord, we'd ask that your blessings be upon each one that is represented here tonight. Be with the officials in the state, the federal government, and in our county, that they would make their decisions wisely and do the things that they need to do to improve the lives of citizens in Alexander County and throughout the state and throughout the nation. Lord, we'd ask that you be with our military personnel, both at home and abroad, and be with those folks in Wisconsin that go through some extremely hard times after the difficulty they had yesterday. Lord, we'd ask you to be with us tonight in all that we do, for we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Tonight, we're going to have a special recognition. I'm going to call on Larry Yoder to do this presentation. If you would, go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a distinct honor for me because I have watched this lady for years in Alexander County and the things that she has accomplished and the things that she still continues to try to accomplish in our county when it comes to working with our citizens. But Margot, would you come forward, please, ma'am? And I'll let you stand up here while I talk about you a few minutes. She's a, and I say this from all honesty, Margot has been a very influential part of my family's life because of the things that she's done in the cook right, eat right, buy right food. Whatever the program was, anyway, my wife got started on that thing two years ago, about two years ago, and it was a tremendous asset to our family. And my wife got on that because of Margot and has greatly improved her health and really looks great now that she followed Margot's recipe for fitness. But Margot has always worked hard in her family consumer position delivering programs to improve the lives of county citizens. Her outstanding programs such as Real Money, Real World, SNAP Ed, Serve Safe, Taylor's Learning Center Garden Project, Q Rico, Kids in the Kitchen, Extension Community Association, and many more have been extremely valuable to the health and well-being of our county. She has also performed outstanding community service work as well on her own time. Margot has been involved in the Ezekels Room, Ezekels Room, which is a mission of forgiven ministry. Also, once a month, Margot has volunteered for Meals on Wheels and delivered a warm meal to shut-ins during her lunch break. Margot also volunteers in the mission of Pedes Galuthan Church in Bethlehem. We want to salute Margot Mosley for the serving as a role model to others and the importance of serving our fellow man in whatever way that she can. And Margot came to work, and I'm not going to tell how old you are or anything if I tell this, you know, but Margot came to work for Alexander County on June 3, 1985, and she's been a valuable asset to this community ever since. And not only, you know, but from what we said here about her and everything, you know, a lot of the things that she was involved in was through her work and the things that she did through the extension program. But when you can see how she'd go out on her lunch hour and take food to people who were shut-in and the Meals on Wheels program and the other things that she has participated in this county. And on top of that, Margot, even though we're giving you a key to the county, I will say what an outstanding citizen and a role model that you've been for the citizens of this county. And I am just tickled that I had the opportunity to work with you, so, and also, it's been just an extreme pleasure of mine to be able to say that I know Margot Mosley and the accomplishments that she's accomplished in her career at Alexander County. And for that, I want to present this to you, and it's a token of appreciation because it's a key to the county, and it says here, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Margot Mosley in recognition of her 27 years of service for the Cooperative Extension, Alexander County Center, presented August 6, 2012." And Margot, it's a great pride, it's a thing that I get to be able to do this, because I think you're just a tremendous asset, and you've always gone above and beyond the calling duty to take care of our citizens. So I want to say congratulations. Thank you, ma'am. Absolutely. It's a pleasure.
Get in front of the seat. Get in front of the seat.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Say a few words if you'd like.
Well, I don't have anything specifically planned to say, but I would say it's been certainly an honor to work within the county in the kind of partnership effort that Cooperative Extension has with the county, with the citizens and NC State. It's a unique role as an educator. People come into our office seeking answers, and hopefully, we help to connect them. We don't always give a direct answer, but we hope that we can connect. And I've had wonderful people with which to work and volunteers that I will miss. They won't be moving away, so I'll have a chance to interact with them in another way, but it's been truly a privilege and an honor to have this role for 27 years.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Commissioner's Report. Is there any Commissioner that would like to report on anything?
Mr. Chairman, I would. This past weekend, I received several complaints about the Stony Point area and the paving job that was done on the street, and I can't remember the name of the street, but I know it runs a parallel with NC 90 in front of First Baptist, First, the Stony Point Methodist, not First Baptist, Stony Point Baptist, Stony Point Methodist, the Stony Point Masonic Lodge, and down by Stony Point Elementary School.
Ruritan Park, right?
Ruritan Park. But they gravelled the road down there, tarred and gravelled it. And, you know, I don't usually say things about DOT, but I don't know who made the decision to tar and gravel that road, but they have made an absolute mess out of that section of highway in Stony Point. And I just want to go on record as saying that also that the calls I got wanted to know why the county commissioners paved that road that way. And to the citizens of this county, the Alexander County Commissioners do not maintain, do not construct, or pave any highway in Alexander County. That is totally the responsibility of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I'll be glad to take blame for the things that I do where they're so said about me or the decisions that I make, but we did not make the decision to put tar and gravel on that highway down there. And I just want to make sure that the folks know that, and I told them I'd be sure to say something tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
And if anybody wants to complain about it, the best office call would be the one in State's rather than the maintenance guys up here. And I was going to look the phone number up, but it's in the book.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, also, I'd like to recognize the gentleman that's here with us tonight. He's here representing the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and Mr. David Nichols is here with us tonight. And, Mr. Nichols, we're glad that you came by to share some time with us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, you have the agenda before you. We do need to make one addition on the consent agenda. We need to add Item D, a surplus weapon, to the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented with adding that item under the consent agenda.
I second it. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Are you for or against, Judy?
I raised my hand.
Okay. It was up through both of them.
Really? Sorry.
She's still thinking about the DOT.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is public comment. We do have one person that has signed up. Ms. Faith Wallers, if you would, please come up. Please state your name and your community or address that you live in.
Okay. I'm Faith Wallers, and I live in the Sugarloaf community. Today, I'm here because I was invited to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Summit in Raleigh on the 17th and 18th. And I'd also like to invite all of you to attend our Saturday morning breakfast work session. It's specifically for youth to talk to their county commissioners about ways they think they might be able to improve their county. I'd also like to ask for your support for the Kids Vote 2012. I am the youth coordinator of that event, and my hope for that is that it will raise awareness in the kids of Alexander County about how our government works, why it's important to vote. Each kid gets to actually go into their very own voting booth and get to cast their ballot. And then at the end, we tally it up to see who the kids of the county would have elected. And the next one is the Ronald McDonald House Charities Pop Tub Program. I've been working with that program for about five years. I'd like to give each of you a pop tub house. It's just to collect them.
They help a lot. It's for families of sick kids. They get to stay there when they can't afford to stay in a hotel, and they can stay there for as long as they want really and at no charge.
Thank you.
And they use the pop tubs, they recycle them, and they use that money to fund their house. They also provide meals there.
And finally, on November 23rd through 27th, I'll be attending the National 4-H Congress in Atlanta, Georgia, and they asked us to come prepared with some little items that we could give to the other delegates from across the country. And I was thinking if I might could get like a small lapel pin for Alexander County to encourage them to come visit our area. Do y'all have any questions about?
How many lapel pins do you think you'd need?
I'm not quite sure. Probably about 50.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. Hang on one second. I just wanted to say, you know, how great it is that you're taking such an initiative to go out and be in the community and do these different things that you're involved in. And I think that it shows that you've got initiative and you can, you know, if you apply yourself, you can succeed at anything, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the work that you've done with these different groups. And so you and Berkey and Mr. French will be there.
I'll be at the breakfast.
Yeah.
Probably fine on being there.
I was going to ask her to go back. The breakfast you mentioned is in Raleigh, in case people hearing this wonder when it's going to be the Sugarloaf community building. Want to make sure.
Because that's one of the programs that you, the association that we are members of, that's one of the programs that they sponsor, and it's a great way to get young people involved in their local government so that they can understand and be able to spread the word about local government and what it does for the citizens of their counties. I'm glad you're involved.
So, thank you.
Very good, and I'll see you there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in the audience, but I meant to mention this during the Commissioner's Report, and I failed to do so, but I feel compelled to mention that one of our past county commissioners, Tim Glass and his wife Bobby, lost their daughter. She passed with Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever a week and a half ago, I believe it was. And I just want to pass along condolences to the family. Some of you may have been aware of it, may not have been aware of it, but Becky was 44 years of age in the prime of her life, and it's just a sad, sad situation. So if you feel compelled to send a note to Tim and to Bobby, I'm sure they would be glad to receive it. So I just want to make everybody aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Item two on the agenda, public hearing, closeout of the Piedmont Wood Products CD-BG grant. Call Nancy Coley, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments Community Development Association, Administration, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizens' comments before submitting the closeout performance report for Community Development Block Grant Number 09-C-2038, Piedmont Wood Products Incorporated Small Business and Entrepreneurial Assistance Project. The purpose of this $250,000 grant was to provide Piedmont Wood Products financial assistance in the amount of $52,000 for building rehabilitation and $173,000 for the purchase of machinery and equipment. Piedmont Wood Products committed to retain 12 employees that they had at that time and to create an additional 10 new jobs within the two-year project period. And of the 10 jobs that they were to create, at least 70% were required to be filled by low and moderate income persons. Piedmont Wood Products has retained the 12 employees that they started out with and has hired an additional 22 employees, and 87% of the new employees were previously low in moderate income. So you can see, it has been a success. And also, this project allowed an existing furniture frame manufacturing facility to change its customer base. Piedmont Wood Products now manufactures seating pieces for the healthcare industry and manufactures custom-made decorative wood tables. Also included in this project was $5,000 to develop and nurture an entrepreneurial environment to spur growth of other small businesses. These grant funds enabled other entrepreneurs to take a total of 24 online classes through Catawba Valley Community College, the Alexander Center for Education. And additionally, the Alexander County Economic Development Corporation conducted a two-day workshop, Thinking Inside the Box, a workshop on entrepreneurial creativity and innovation, and it was held here at CBCC. Do any of you have any questions?
Well, the comment is just, it's very successful.
It was.
And so, we appreciate your help in obtaining the grant and anything we can do.
Thank you for...
Anything we can do collectively to increase employment in Alexander County is much appreciated.
This was a fairly new project back in '09, and I want to thank you all for stepping out and trying something new, and it worked, and it certainly helped Piedmont Wood Products.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there a motion?
May the close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to close out the papers of the Community Investment North Carolina Department of Commerce as it pertains to the Piedmont Wood Products.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Nancy. Excuse me. Item three on the agenda, resolution in favor of addressing the abandoned golf course at Oliver's Landing subdivision. I call on Seth Harris, County Planner.
Thank you very much. You have in front of you tonight a resolution. Let me give you a little bit of background information on that. Mr. French and I have received numerous complaints about the abandoned golf course located at Oliver's Landing subdivision. We went out to the property and looked into it a little more, took some pictures, and I have some of those show you tonight, but some background information or some facts. The investment group that previously maintained the property has abandoned the property. It is currently in foreclosure. The bank involved is Capital Bank from Raleigh. We have, we have two options to address the situation given by the general statutes. One is to adopt an ordinance that would affect the whole county. The other is to address this situation individually. Both of these are allowed by the general statutes. This resolution tonight just allows the process to be started and gives your, if approved, gives your blessing on that process to be started.
Can you show some of those pictures?
Yes, please. Here's a view from the clubhouse. That's like a driving rain shed behind the clubhouse. You can see some tall weeds here, tall grass. Next slide. Clubhouse parking lot, more tall weeds. Next slide. This is probably one of the worst spots that we saw, kind of looking down towards a creek bottom. You can't really see it in this picture, but there is a walkway that goes in between the weeds down through there. Next slide. If you look in the far background, you can see that walking path. If I say walking path, it was actually a golf cart path. You can see the tall grass. What you can't see is the houses behind me, that about this, this patch here. Next slide. This is looking back the other direction. I want to get a picture. There are some residents out there that actually mowed some of the fairways, and this is kind of a contrast to the other direction that's grown up in weeds. Next slide. That's it.
Seth, has anybody contacted the bank about doing some upkeep? I understand they're in control of it now.
We haven't contacted the bank, no. That's kind of what this resolution is for, let us move forward with that process and notify the owners and that sort of thing.
Has anybody from that area contacted the bank about it?
I don't believe so, but I don't know for sure.
Have you been in contact with the owners? Now, the bank has not foreclosed on it.
Correct, they have not foreclosed on it.
Okay, so it's in process, but it's not happening.
In the process, exactly.
Has, have you talked to the current owners?
I've talked to a representative of the owners. There are several owners in this investment group, and he's, they're not interested in maintaining it at the point that I talked to him, so.
Has anybody from Oliver's Landing or any, I know there's a homeowners' association, have they been in touch with the bank?
We've talked to different people from Oliver's Landing, including the president of the homeowners' association, and they haven't mentioned that they've contacted the bank at all.
I think, my opinion is that would be the first step. I've read this resolution, and there's a couple of things in it that give me a little bit of problem. Heavy growth of weeds or other noxious vegetables over 12 inches in height. DOT right-of-way in a lot of the county is over 12 inches in height. If not today, it will be after the rains. The other thing, noxious vegetables by your, or vegetation by your definition, is ragweed, poison oak, poison ivy, and no way are we going to say, yeah, we're going to control that in Alexander County. That just isn't going to happen. And then the requirement as far as the mosquitoes and so on, has anybody looked to see whether the mosquitoes, I'm assuming they're worse this year than they've been, but is it because there's been more rain or is it because there are breeding places on the golf course?
That's a good question. Leanne Wissner has contacted Deener in Raleigh about that, and she's going forward soon with mosquito counts out there.
Well, the note that Deener is not involved is not accurate, because if Oliver's Landing has runoff control basins, then that falls under Deener. If the golf course has runoff control basin, that falls under Deener. If there's construction, if ponds are constructed on creeks and so on, that falls under a different category than dry weather ponds. So Deener may have some responsibility over there, whether they want to say they do or not, and I'd like to see them do their job first because they carry more clout. Besides that, we're paying them to do it, and if it's not being addressed, they need to get up there and, and see what's going on. One problem I've had in the past is that during wet seasons like this, Deener has said, okay, we're going to put in erosion control basins to hold the water, meter it back into the creeks and all that, and that's great. Saves a lot of erosion along the creeks, but when you have seasons like this where there's a lot of water, there are natural mosquito breeding beds, and they don't want you to spray them and so on. So I prefer Deener. If it's on, if it's their criteria, they need to be out there and get some mosquito bit rather than the folks at Oliver's Landing or county employees. And this, we may need a resolution before it's all done, but right now, I'm not sure that we've got enough information to say, hey, this is what we need to do to get this I would ask, and somebody here may know, as far as the homeowners' association, have they written to Capital Bank and have they gotten a response from? Yes, ma'am?
I am the president of the Oliver's Landing...
Would you come up and, would you step up to the mic, please?
My name is Nancy Campbell, and I'm the president of the homeowners' association in Oliver's Landing. We have been in contact with the bank for a number of months, trying to get the owners to take care of the property. Truly, they have, that's what they say, they have no interest in doing it, and it's beyond us all how they can simply say that and, and do nothing.
Excuse me, the owners say that or the bank says that?
The bank says they are in touch with the owners, and the owners do not wish to do anything to maintain the course.
By being in contact with them. Is that a telephone call? Is that an email? Is that a letter?
Yes, telephone calls, and we are actually, we have a small delegation planned to go and talk to the bank in Raleigh.
I would take a letter from an attorney saying they got responsibilities. The bank, I understand they're foreclosing, but they do have some responsibilities for maintaining the property. And if we incur costs, that's exactly who it's going to go back to. And they need to be aware of it, and it needs to be in writing so that it can be verified that they were advised and they declined, or they said they would and didn't, or whatever. And I'd make a picture of a big billboard over there on 127 and say, I'm going to put a billboard up there that says, Capital Bank does not maintain property after they foreclose on it, and we suffer because of it.
Right. And it's such a long timeframe, too, for, before anybody can or will do anything about it, and in the meantime, this, this property is, truly, it looks abandoned, and it's affecting everybody. Those, those water areas that you're talking about, they do not all connect with little creeks and so on. There are creeks, there are water areas behind one of our members' home here tonight, and it was aerated, but now, you can just look at it. It is a stagnant pond of water with scum over the top. So it's, I think it is the timeframe that bothers us all. Things will be done down the road, but for now, we have a, we have truly an abandoned property there. It's affecting our homeowner values. It's, it's affecting the fact that real estate agents will not show our properties to people because the golf course, the golf course weaves its way through all the homes. We have 140 homes in Oliver's Landing and 40 more lots in the woodlands associated with us, and the golf course is all around those properties. So currently, we have homeowners who, and some of them here, who have gone out on their own and cut grass to make it look better and to keep the, you know, the bugs and the rats and the snakes and whatever down. But we already see a problem with snakes and, and vermin in the growth, so.
I ask you a question. When do you anticipate having this meeting with the, with the bank?
Did they set a date on that? Not yet? I think they're working on setting up the appointment.
Well, the bank's going to put you off as long as they can put you off. I mean, that's...
That's why we're asking you to have a solution tonight.
Then you should have been on the bank earlier, because they have more control than we do over what happens on that property. The, I, I think they need to be involved in it. Now, you were talking about some of the ponds that were dry weather ponds. Somebody permitted those. Now, I don't know whether it come out of the Department of Agriculture or who, but Seth needed to... Now, I don't know whether it come under the Department of Agriculture or who, but Seth needed to find out. In addition to Deener, Department of Agriculture may have some buy-in in that.
Seth or Ms. Campbell, when, when is the foreclosure process?
It was put into effect Friday, September 13th.
Okay.
July, pardon me, July 13th.
July 13th.
Mm-hmm.
So, is this, Seth, do you know if this is going to be a 90-day foreclosure? Or is this going to drag on longer?
I have a copy of it here in front of me.
How long has it been since they quit maintaining the property?
Last October.
October 2000.
I'll, I'll, I'd like to say this, I'm, I'm...
Can I see it, please?
I'm personally supportive of whatever the county commission can do to remedy the situation. I have friends also that live over there that are suffering, that you rest, that you folks are suffering too. What I would like to see is what the result of, is, is what Daryl is saying, what, what your result is of the meeting with the bank. And then after that, then we can act accordingly from, from the county perspective to enact this resolution or another resolution with more teeth or whatever. But I would prefer to wait until after you have the meeting. Now, if they keep putting you off and putting you off and putting you off, then contact Mr. French, and we can do something, I would suggest, earlier than that. But that's what I would like to recommend that we do.
And I understand your frustration and aggravation, 100%. And the responsible parties ought to address it. The responsible parties are the owners who are now going into foreclosure. So that means the bank is the next responsible party as far as where I'm sitting. They can recover some of their investment there anyway. And, and I, I don't know, you need somebody that maybe doesn't talk to them real nice all the time to discuss it with the bank. But giving them time to decide when you're going to talk to them and so on, they're going to drag it out as long as they can because it's not costing them anything.
But I will also follow up with what Mr. Robertson said, that, I just learned this in business. When you, when you talk to an entity like this, you need to document it in a letter or an email, who, what, when, where, and why, so that you can always say, we talked to this person on this date, and this is what they said or didn't say. So that gives us a, a reference point. I feel and empathize with the fact it's taking so long because I've, used to go to the clubhouse and have dinner, and it was a beautiful place, and except I have friends that live over there. And, and I know you're tired of waiting, but I think if you take that next step and then come back to us after that next step, which is contacting the bank, and if they refuse to communicate with you, then we can act accordingly.
Commissioner Yoder was wanting to say something, but I wanted to just mention one thing. What, what Commissioner Robertson said, we do understand your frustration. We've talked to you for a number of months, and we understand that this particular resolution, the way it's written, opens up a lot of, I'll say, a can of worms for other things. It's not just Oliver's Landing subdivision. We got to look down the road at what happens if we do, you know, start this process. So we want to make sure all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Go ahead, sorry.
All I ask is that, Mr. French, if you don't mind, would you explain the, the situation as far as getting the health director involved? And why the resolution would be of importance to her for what she would need as far as the general statutes are concerned?
Certainly. The resolution that you have for tonight is really, I guess, the second or third resolution that we worked on in conjunction with the county attorney's office and Leanne Wisnig and our health director. This resolution specifically deals with Oliver's Landing subdivision. It doesn't open, it really deals with that one, the Oliver's Landing subdivision. It doesn't deal with anything else in the county. It's, it's really more specific to that. And it gives her permission to investigate the golf course and whether it meets the definition of public health nuisance. She has that authority and statute anyway, but it helps that process move along. And, but it's only related to Oliver's Landing. It's not, it's not, it just doesn't deal with anything else but that.
It doesn't even deal with Oliver's Landing. It deals with Rivercrest Golf Course is what it should deal with. Oliver's Landing is the division that's having a problem. And I understand having a piece of paper when you go on somebody's property. And what I would suggest, rather than this resolution, that we get a letter from the homeowners association at Oliver's Landing saying, we're experiencing increased infestation with mosquitoes this season, and we wonder if it may be coming from the adjacent property that has been abandoned and not maintained since October of last year. Then when we get that letter, we send a letter if we know who the owners are. And if, it would be good for them to send a copy to the bank and to the owners when they send it to us. When we get the letter, send a registered letter to the bank that we have received this complaint from Oliver's Landing, and we can't sit by and ignore it. We're going to proceed with trying to verify where the mosquito increase is coming from. And I don't think they'll back up on that, Rick. That way, we've got a documented complaint from Oliver's Landing that because of that abandoned property and no maintenance, they're experiencing mosquitoes, whatever. Then we will advise the owner and the bank that they brought it to our attention. We're going to send our environmental health people over to investigate, and we will provide them the results of that investigation.
But I guess the, and I agree, but the point is with this, it only deals with that property. It doesn't deal with the county, this is not a countywide thing. This is dealing with just that property.
I understand that, but if you, if you do it for this one, then it's going to be, well, you know, this other one over here and 10 more. Why, what's your second, please, Chairman? Let, let me ask you a question. Why do you need the resolution to go through and, and do what you said you could do anyway?
She's, she's requesting the, the resolution so that she can move forward. It gives her support from the county commissioners.
She'll have the support in the form of that letter. But I'm not going to send somebody over there and say, hey, we're going to do away with poison ivy and ragweed and anything else that makes me sneeze. We need to address what the specific problems are, make sure that the people responsible for the property have been given due notice. And then if they don't do something, then we'll send our people over there to do it.
What do you propose to do if a public health notice is found to exist?
If a nuisance exists? She would, she would proceed on contacting the, the health director, proceed on contacting her and move forward with the process to have it cleaned up, abated, and abated by the county. It's going to be, and as Ben said, it's not a, certainly not a process that happens quickly. It'll take time for it to happen because of all the property owners. But you have to, have to be contacted. There's a large number of those.
Well, since the bank started foreclosure, send it to them and make them responsible.
Well, what the attorney wants us to do is contact them, but contact everybody else too, that's all the other owners. We've got, I think we have a list of those now.
What does our county...
That's, that's fine, but that can take place while it's going to somebody else. I'm not, if they want to come and lock me up for not saying, the attorney's perfectly right on that, that's fine.
So what does our county attorney say about this? Does he think that we have the right to do this?
When you go through the process, yes, ma'am.
He does?
Yes.
If I may speak, I'm Tru White. I've talked to you twice before about this issue, October 2011, February of 2012. And I do understand where you're coming from, is that we need to contact the bank. It's my understanding, the board has contacted the bank and the owners in the past. I think what is, our issue is we have no teeth when we contact them. They have, they have no obligation to do anything. I think the bank's worried about the $3 million they're owed, rather than worrying about how tall the grass is in Oliver's Landing. I, I think for them, it's, it's something that, you know, they, they have absolutely no issue, no care about one way or the other. We can certainly do that, but the whole time we're going through this process, then we're going to have more and more people who do not come to Oliver's Landing to buy houses or to buy lots or to build in the community, and our tax base is just going to deteriorate. As I mentioned back in February, when those realtors from Hickory stopped bringing people to Oliver's Landing, it's going to cease, and they will quit bringing them across that bridge for a very, very long time. I do understand, I've, I've talked to Rick. I think he understands our situation. They've been out to look at the grass and the ponds, and some of these ponds have been actually, they've actually arranged them where the water couldn't drain properly. So it's actually a man-made type of situation. I'm not an expert on that, but that's what I understand. But I would like for you to reconsider, and if, and if I could ask maybe that you would vote on that resolution tonight? And then if it doesn't pass, if we could probably work on, on these other, the, the other way you'd like us to do it. But this other way you'd like us to do it, I mean, we're talking about months, months, months down the road, so, okay.
If you can get a letter written, I think we can get a letter written. The reason we've talked about months and months and months is because everybody's walking around talking, and there's not a whole lot being done, I don't think. I must have received what, a dozen emails this weekend, said about the same thing. I, I understood what the aggravation and frustration was, but...
The other part of it is that there is no financial tie between Oliver's Landing and the golf course. It's a public course.
I know that, but you're the neighbors. Your property joins theirs, and so you're the neighbors. And as far as what you just said, if there's, I don't know what it's going to take to get rid of those ponds, but we're not going to say here, I'm not going to tell you that we'll bring grading equipment in there and grade out those ponds and have them where they're drained.
That's not what we're asking you to do.
Well, if you want to cure mosquitoes, that might be one of the solutions. But we're, right now, we're having a conversation about stuff that we can't verify because I don't know where the mosquitoes are coming from. I don't doubt that some of those ponds don't drain. But I, I drove in, turned around to clubhouse and went back out just to see, and I saw essentially what the picture showed. But I think we can, I've outlined a way I think it moved forward, but as far as approving a resolution that says we're going to take care of everything that's on this thing, no, I can't do that. Just the way it is.
Mr. French?
Yes?
If we do abate the property and the bank takes it over, are, are we on legal standing where we could be reimbursed for that?
If you go through the process, yes. I mean, you give them opportunity to clean it up, and if they don't, then you have it cleaned up and attach it on their property.
Was this resolution crafted after another one that you've seen somewhere else?
No. A little south of here.
If we get a letter from Oliver's Landing homeowners complaining about it, documenting the problem, and we get the county attorney to send a letter to the bank, I think they'll let us go in there and do what we need to do to verify what's going on. And I think they would do it very promptly because they're liable if, if this all settles down around them.
Seth, come back up, please.
This is a, it's not a unique problem, but it is unique in that the county wishes to address it. I contacted the several planning departments within the state, and with the city of Wake Forest, did have a similar situation, but they pretty much have thrown their hands up and let it kind of take its course. There's different developers have taken interest in it, and it's kind of taking care of itself in the city of Wake Forest. But other than that, I haven't seen any other good examples of this in the state and any resolutions for a problem like this.
Seth, just a question. In, in reading the resolution in favor of addressing the abandoned golf courses at Oliver's Landing subdivision, I've seen the pictures. I've been over there before and after the situation has occurred. And I understand Mr. Robertson's issues and concerns, but I would ask of you and Mr. French, what would be the detriment or harm if, in us passing this resolution tonight? It's, would seem to me that it would get the process started from the county perspective. And there's a lot of other things that need to happen that we've mentioned. The homeowners association letter, contact with the attorneys and so forth. So Seth and Mr. French, I'd ask you, what would be the harm in passing this resolution?
Our original draft of this was a little more strong in wording, and we were advised by the health director to step it down a little bit. And actually, this would just says that the commissioners support the investigation of this. We would send this to the owners and to the bank in hopes that it would get their attention and kind of like the letter you were talking about, get their attention, and hopefully they would take care of the problem before we had to go to the abatement process.
I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I was going to make a motion, if you'd let me.
Sure.
I'll make a motion, this board authorized the county manager to receive a letter as quickly as Oliver's Landing can get it to us, and have our attorney draft a letter and send it to the bank and to the owners within three days, receipt by the county, outlining the concerns and telling them they will be responsible for the resolution and the problems over there when our health department recognizes.
I, I would second that.
That way, we're talking about the specific issue that we can verify. We can verify mosquitoes. And I certainly am not, I'm in conversation now or discussion. But as far as saying we're going to do ragweed and poison ivy and that stuff, no. I'd be lying to you if I told you I was doing that.
But I think putting a timeframe around it is important too.
If Oliver's Landing, if you can have us a letter back in three days, then we will get a letter to the, the bank in, in three days. And in that process, we'll still be trying to get some of those 22 owners, so we'll, but the, the big dogs will be served.
Is that a good?
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir. You, Chairman, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I'll go right ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Now, I was just going to ask, is, is that a reasonable compromise?
Yes, I think it is, and I think we can get you that letter. Now, I don't know how soon that group will get to the bank people, but I, I can guarantee we can get you that letter.
I have some problems with this, just like Commissioner Robertson. I understand everything. I live in Bethlehem, and you guys, I know a lot of you out there in the audience. But there's some things about this that I do have a problem with. And, sorry.
And I do also.
Mr. Robertson, I'd like to add, I mean, you know, if you would, men, you know, gentleman's agreement to amend your motion, I, I would like to see us also include the first sentence there. Whereas North Carolina General Statute 153A-140 declares that the county has the authority to do that and to, to make that and to put that in, in with that.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, and then down there, and then down there, sir, where it's got, where is the Alexander County Health Director? Instead of is given permission, could we word that to say, we'll be given permission to investigate this and...
Will be or shall be.
Or, yeah, and, and include that inside the letter to all parties that are involved so that everybody knows that we, we mean what we say and we're going to do what we say.
Those words would need to be in there because the first step is going to have to be environmental health going over there and taking a look around. Now, it may also involve Deener and others after they look, but, yeah, they got to do that.
We got it.
Well, that, well, that, that, that should take care of everything that we need in order to give the health director that she'll know that based on these letters and what's going on, that the information will be coming to her, then she'll be able to move forward.
Right.
Okay, all right, okay. That'll work then.
I'll second your change in the language.
Okay.
I would say I'd comment again. I've, I've said it, but I'm going to say it again. I, I know you're tired of being, dancing around the maypole, so to speak. And we, we hear what you're saying and asking for. So, you know, even though we've had some differences in what the language should say and should do, we all agree that if we, we can get the correspondence going, we're behind you and get... that if we, we can get the correspondence going, we're behind you in getting this situation remedied.
Okay, okay. We, we appreciate your consideration, really, and your help with this. This has been, the, the golf course has been going downhill for, um, all four years that I've lived in Oliver's Landing, and it just, it keeps getting worse and worse. And now, nobody is there taking care of it. So, um, we needed your help with this, and, um, okay, together we'll push forward on this, and we'll get you the letters in the next couple of days.
Let's, be- before you sit down, let's see if this motion passes.
Yes. Is there any more discussion? There being none, all the-
I know, it's just that, that's why that, more person might want to speak.
Yes.
My name's Ellen Tierney.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, my name's Ellen Tierney, and I live in Oliver's Landing. One thing I'd like to bring up that nobody's brought up is about ticks. Um, we have rodents and ticks. One walk with my dog, and I pulled seven ticks off. And you just talked about somebody who passed away from that. So I think we have to look at other things as well as mosquitoes, is, you know, we have rodents, snakes, unbelievable. And, and, you know, all our properties back up to that. So, just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Ticks are heavier this year. Uh, I'm an old surveyor. I check myself every day when I go in to make sure they're not crawling in my head, or, but, uh-
We appreciate your comments.
They're worse this year, so...
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you.
I asked, I asked her to wait till we voted, and she ran off. When, when you get the homeowners' association together, write a letter to the county. At the same time, write a letter to the, uh, bank, uh, somewhere I had their name, but write a letter to them and tell them what y'all tolerated, the, the way you've told it to us. Uh, put it in detail and send it, because they need, you need documentation that you've sent it. I don't doubt that you've told them in words, but send it so that you can back it up, and that'll help us when our letter gets there, too, please, ma'am.
I'd send it, I'd send it registered mail, too. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, item four on the agenda, resolution authorizing the tax administrator to determine requests for release or refund of tax of less than $100. Call in Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on agenda item number four, there's, uh, information from the finance director and a resolution. Uh, during the audit, uh, fieldwork during the 2011, 2012, uh, audit process, uh, the alters noted that we needed a formal resolution adopting the current process that we have, which the, which would allow us to, to do that. And the request is for a release or refund of $100 or more would have to be approved by the county, Board of County Commissioners. That's just merely more formality more than anything else.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item five on the agenda, sales tax report. Again, county manager, Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your packet under agenda item number five is a monthly sales tax report. So far through 11 months, uh, we have collected $3,274,583. We budgeted $3,258,200. Um, so we're actually, have exceeded that, our budgeted number, uh, and, um, if you look down below compared to last year, we're $273,032 ahead of last year's numbers. So just wanna point that out. We also have the hold harmless information on the bottom, which is always Commissioner Yoder's favorite part. Um, it's taken an additional $93,000 to hold everyone harmless. So I'd be glad to try to answer any questions, but it's for 11 months, so we have one more month of sales tax. Excuse me.
Any questions?
If everybody hang on to that sheet, uh, sheet, the next item on the agenda, we might wanna incorporate it with it. Thought I'd lead you into that one, brother. Wonder where you'd be going there.
Wonder where I might go.
All right.
Go ahead. And it's, and it's very fortunate that Mr. Nichols is here tonight.
He doesn't have anything to do with that part of it, but I understand.
Well, you know we're sincere about it.
Can we go on, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, sir, go on.
Um, the next agenda item is for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, a solicitation of county legislative goals proposal for 2013, 2014. Uh, in your packet is the information and the legislative goals handbook. Um, basically, proposed goals need to be received on or before September 17th, and then will be referred to the appropriate steering committee for review and consideration. If the goals are received after September 17th, uh, then they are sent directly to the Legislative Goals Committee. And then, in the information that you have, you have the process. Um, September 17th, the goals, uh, is the goal deadline. September through October, the steering committees will review the goals. November, the Legislative Goals Committee meets, and in December, the board directors reviews and finalizes the recommendations. And then, in January, January 24th and 25th, the Legislative Goals Conference, the membership approves the goals. And again, you have, in the information that you have, it, it outlines the process, um, and it must, uh, take, plu- take the form of adopted resolution by the Board of Commissioners, a letter from the board chairman on behalf of the board, and/or a letter from the president of affiliate organization, or any other documentation or materials that support the proposed goal. So, um, pretty self-explanatory, but we go through this process each year, so just wanna bring that to your attention.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I'd like to see happen this year, that I don't, I don't know whether they've done it in the past or not, if we have, if we have, I understand to be corrected, uh, but I would like to see this information sent out to each department head, and to see the things that, what kind of, uh, information they would send back to us as far as their legislative goals. Uh, most of the time, the two, the two counties that have been, uh, predominantly sending in, and, uh, more legislative go- legislative goals in the state of North Carolina as far as county's concerned, has been Gaston and Catawba. Now, Kitty Barnes serves on the Legislative Goals Committee, and a gentleman from Gaston, Gaston County also serves on it. But we, we need to make our voices heard and get this information in, so that they can, uh, they can, uh, address some of these issues. And now, the, the date for the goals being sent in was extended at our last association meeting in Asheville, and that's why the date has been moved up to September. But I'd like for each one of our department heads to have that, and I would also like for one of our main goals to be, of course, you know, they are going to do something about, uh, revisiting the tax situation in North Carolina, and to start looking at how to, uh, I guess, I don't know, change the way that the taxes are done in North Car- I can't think of the proper word I need this time. But, uh, I'd like to see us do that. And I'd like for, would be one of our goals to be, uh, from this board that will be sent down, and I would like for us to also contact all the smaller rural counties in North Carolina, and see if we can get them on board to push the state association, and also to push the state of North Carolina to change the way the sales tax are distributed in North Carolina back to per capita instead of point of origin. And it, it, the big counties are going to fight this tooth and nail, and until we get more rural counties directly involved with association, and try to outnumber these folks down there, and get the people in Raleigh that represent us down there to stand up for the rural counties, we're not gonna get any of these changes made. And this is the time to do it, this is the year to do it, and for, when they start looking at how to redo this, uh, the tax scales and all those things that they're probably gonna start looking at this coming year, this is time for us to put a push on them. And these people that are running for office, hey, look, if they don't wanna play ball and help us on this per capita point sale, then guess what? We can vote for somebody else. Doesn't make it different who they are. But it's time for us to stand up for the small rural counties, and let the state of North Carolina and the association know exactly how we feel. And we need to make that one of our goals.
Amen, brother.
I designate Larry to be the leader.
Oh.
I, I already lead, trust me. Berkey'll tell you, and Rick'll tell you. I'll tell him every chance I get. It doesn't bother me one bit, but...
You almost run when they see you coming.
Well, they some of them do that, I'm telling you.
When this was done, the Article 42 tax was a per capita tax. The General Assembly changed it to point of distribution, and if we were out on the streets, it would be called robbery, because that's what took place. Uh, in the last 12 months, we were financing school projects, uh, essentially with that tax. And in the last 12 months, it's cost us a little over $93,000, because it's not a per capita distribution. And, uh, it needs to be one of our goals.
Well, not only the money-
Everything there, sir.
Not only the money we've lost, but it's actually cost us money, $93,000.
Well, that's why, you know, you wanna, you know, I, I know there are things that we can't purchase in our county, and, and I totally respect that, uh, and we have to go sometimes outside the county to purchase the things that we absolutely need. But every opportunity we have, you know, people need to buy here locally if they can, so that they'll remember that, uh, our taxes are point of origin and, and not per capita anymore. And, uh, we need to educate folks on that, and we need to make a push from the small rural counties to make sure that they understand that we're gonna push to see this taxes changed back to per capita, and, uh, to assist the small counties. Now, my thing about it is, is that, you know, when this, uh, decrease in, uh, revenue started coming in, housing fell off, all the revenues that all the counties collect started falling off, uh, you know, it was all I heard was, well, if we all just work together, we can get through this. Well, great, you know? And we had to take drastic steps, and you all remember, y'all weren't here. Darrell and I were here. You were here.
I was here.
When we had to take the drastic steps during revalue, doing one of the most unprecedented things that's ever heard, of raising taxes during a revalue year. And we did that, and, and, and we took the heat, but at the same time-
I wasn't here then.
Well, when we did that, we, we took the heat for it. And what I will say to that is, yes, we took heat then, but it saved our county from having a financial situation, and made us can remain stronger, and the citizens of this county, uh, uh, helped us, and, and we made it, and we made it through this, and we haven't had a tremendous burden placed upon our citizens of this county because of that. But we need to make sure that we do push this per capita thing, and I think it'd be just a, a great goal that should come from our county. And also, the department heads need to make some recommendations, what type goals they'd like to have, uh, presented to the, uh, the association.
I've got a couple.
Go ahead. I, I was just gonna say, uh, one thing Larry said, and we, we try to remind people as often as we can that, uh, if you buy locally inside the, uh, county line of Alexander County, that tax money stays here. If you buy in Catawba County or Iredell, that money goes to Catawba County government, Iredell County government, to support their citizens. So if, if you can at all, try, try to spend your money here. Think about, you know, hey, if I got to, you know, go to Walmart, if you spend that money at Walmart in Taylorsville, it stays in Alexander County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You did very good on that, but you forgot one of your own arguments when you were doing that.
What's that?
That because we have different area codes in Alexander County, some of our sales tax that belongs to Alexander County-
Zip codes.
Is, I, I'm sorry, yeah, zip codes, uh, uh, because it should come to Alexander County, still winds up in Hickory, because, uh, we don't have a unique designation, uh, for the Bethlehem area. Same thing on the eastern part of the county, we just don't have as much population. But, uh, we're losing, uh, tax money that should be ours, because there's no way to control it, because of the zip codes.
Right. That's correct.
And we're losing a lot of, uh, money, our taxes, because we don't have the products in Alexander County that we should have, and can't buy the things that we need.
The more money we spend here, the more business will grow.
I've got, I've got-
Go ahead, Bert.
A couple of things I wanna make sure that, I know my counterparts on the board are aware of, but the public may not be aware of this, and I wanna make sure they are, and the representative from the, the association. Uh, I read an article in Civitas that, and this is in the previous legislature, when the Democrats were in control, that there was a movement afoot to appoint judges, not to elect judges anymore. Judges used to be partisan. In the, uh, in the wisdom of the previous legislatures over the last hundred years, the, uh, the other party decided that, in their infinite wisdom, that the party designation would be taken off, and it would be a nonpartisan election. There is still a movement afoot to appoint judges, and we need to make sure that that does not happen. It needs to be changed so that the judges are elected on a partisan basis. The second thing I wanna mention, too, is there is still rumblings in the distance of counties maintaining secondary roads in the county. And that is something that we definitely do not want to happen. Um, I think one of the representatives of Mecklenburg County is behind that push, and, uh, it would absolutely devastate the taxpayers in Alexander County if we had to raise the tax rate to cover the costs of secondary road maintenance in Alexander County. So I know the two that I'm gonna add to the list are those two. Um, and whether they make the top 10 in the state, uh, I could care less, but I know that's two that I, I wanna see, uh, happen.
Yeah.
Partisan election of judges, and the counties do not maintain secondary roads.
Mr. Chairman, uh, one footnote to what Berkey just said, uh, based on county secondary road maintenance, if we had to do that now, that would increase our taxes 20 cents. Uh, right now, uh, Larry mentioned, uh, we've been conservative, John Locke Foundation, 2010, we ranked 94th as far as, uh, tax slash fee impact on our citizens. But you add 20 cents to the tax rate, and, uh, I would want the people who were looking for commissioners at that time to know that it was Raleigh that did it, not, not here.
Uh, and hopefully that will not happen, but, um, you are, uh, you are correct. It is, uh, still out there, so, uh, we've gotta fight to make sure that doesn't happen. Uh, I would, um, propose that we do what Commissioner Yoder had suggested, and that is to send a copy of these, uh, legislative goals process to every department head. And, um, can you do that without a, uh, motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, is there any more discussion about item six?
Nothing, other than I, I think we do need to put together the items we've talked about for the association, and, uh, maybe Rick do the draft, and we'll approve it.
Right. Okay. I'm sure there's some other things we could add. Uh, item seven, excuse me, uh, designation of voting delegates to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, both Commissioner Berkey Jennings and Larry Yoder will be attending the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, and we need to designate one of those two gentlemen as the voting delegate. And in your packet you have the, uh, designation form.
My vote would be that, uh, Commissioner Yoder be that delegate.
And I second it.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion?
I was gonna help Berkey try to win the campaign.
Larry talks the best. He's got the best spot game.
Well, he can talk, that's for sure.
Uh, that Berkey would give him a run for his money. Um, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with the motion. I would also suggest we maybe name Berkey as an alternate, in case something came up, or...
True.
All right.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion in the second and an amendment. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right. Um, item eight on the agenda, excuse me, November 2012 meeting schedule changes. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, our meeting is scheduled for November 13th, and there's conflict on that night. Uh, and the, probably the only option, realistic option, is move the meeting to November 19th, or can't, well, I guess, or cancel a meeting, so I'm not sure what your wishes would be, but, um, have a November meeting, I would have it for November 19th.
Is that pre, is that, uh, pre or post election? When's the election?
Uh, it's in November 6th.
November 6th, okay.
It's November the 6th.
I make a motion we change the date.
To the 19th.
To the 5th, I think is what it's.
19th.
19th.
19th, that's what he's asking.
Yes.
You're asking the 19th, it's supposed to be 5th. You're asking the 19th as opposed to 5th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm...
That's the really only option you got.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have no problem with changing it to the 19th. That's my motion, change it to 19th. I don't vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay.
I'm checking my calendar, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may mention why, I talked to Mr. French about requesting that date change, just for the public's information. The previous date we had scheduled was November 13th, and the United States Air Force band is gonna perform at the Alexander County, uh, High School Auditorium on that date. And so, that's a big event, and it's free. So, I think we need to change the commission meeting so that we can, I want to go to it.
Well, we can't compete with that, or we shouldn't.
I don't have a problem moving it to the 19th. Yes, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item nine on the agenda, report on the Y Ride and the Hidnite Festival Trail Race. Again, Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second annual Y Ride is scheduled for August 25th, which is a Saturday at 9 o'clock. It'll start, uh, in front of Rocky Face Park. And it's a benefit ride through scenic Alexander County. It's a ride, it's not a, it's not a race. We held it last year. We had about 50 participants. The proceeds from the ride go to support our local YMCA. The fee is $20 until August 24th, and then it's $25 a day of, which is a deal. And, um, we invite everyone to come and participate and, uh, look forward to seeing you on Saturday, August 25th at 9 o'clock. On September 22nd, we'll have our first Hidnite Festival Trail Race, and that'll be at Rocky Face Park and in Rocky Face Park. For the last five years, we've had a half marathon and 10K run, and it's been on the roads around, uh, Hidnite and finished at the Hidnite Festival. So, this is a little different for us, but this will be a 10-mile and 5-mile trail run. And I'd like to say that the trail run certainly is much different than running on the roads. You certainly have to look out for roots and rocks and dirt and, uh, all those kind of things come into play. So, if you haven't been out to Rocky Face, um, you're really missing a treat because it's just beautiful. And, um, so this will be our first, this will be our first trail run and the first trail run I'm aware of in Alexander County. The both runs start at 8:00 a.m., and, uh, we're still taking signups, so we're, you know, it's not too late to sign up for anyone. So, we invite you to come participate with us for the Hidnite Festival Trail Race on September 22nd at 8:00. On September 22nd, uh, also will be another special event at Rocky Face Park. We'll have our dedication of Rocky Face Park, uh, at 1:00 p.m. And, um, we've been open since May 25th, and we've had good, uh, participation with the park so far. We're very excited about it. We know this is Hidnite Festival Day, but, um, we want to dedicate our park at 1:00 on September 22nd. So, just want to mention those, uh, activities and events in Alexander County, and, uh, come and join us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. French. Item 10 on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments Number Two, Three, and Four. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number Two is to increase the board of elections budget for fiscal year 2012 for the Help America Vote Act grant to be spent in fiscal year 2013 for the November 2012 election. Amendment Number Three is all for the Health Department to increase the Health Department budget for community transportation grant and to increase the Health Department budget for additional funds for WIC and to, uh, increase the Health Department budget for additional funds for maternal health pregnancy care management program. Likewise, Four is all for Health Department concerning, uh, other items. To increase the Health Department budget for maternal health program, we must reallocate amount not needed for group insurance expense to other maternal health line items. And, uh, we also need to increase the Health Department budget for WIC program, and we must reallocate an amount not needed for group insurance expense for those items. So, um, it's basically the funds associated with those grants.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item 11, Other Business, County Managers Report. Call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I want to mention. One is, um, we've been invited by Carolina Land and Lakes, R.C. and D. to attend their August 8th, 2012 council meeting, and the dinner will be served, and the council meeting will be at 6:30 at Rocky Face Park. And the information's in your packet. Also, on September 25th, 2012, from 3 to 5 in this, uh, at CBCC, is our first meeting for Golden Leaf funding. Dan Gerlock, President of the Golden Leaf Foundation, has set a time, has set a time to meet on that day. This is a community assistance initiative. The Golden Leaf program reserves $2 million per county. Funds can't be used to purchase buildings or property. Currently, Golden staff, uh, staff are, uh, working with four counties, Alexander, Wilkes, Cherokee, and Swain County. Process takes about six months, and again, our first meeting is on September 25th, 2012, and they will be sending out notices about it to the public.
Mr. French, will they actually give us an agenda on what's gonna be discussed on that date?
I don't, I don't think so. Not for the first meeting, anyway.
It's just a general information?
And the first meeting will not be talking about project specific, but just our key issues and objectives in our county.
Okay.
So, if it's jobs, we want to talk about jobs or training, those kinds of things.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, when that happens, I mean, uh, if any of the commissioners are gonna come, I think it would be to make sure that we have our agenda so that we'll be sure that we're all speaking to the same thing and not be scattered, you know, so that they'll know that we're all on the same, I just want to make sure that all of us are on the same ship and that we're all sailing in the same direction so that we'll make a good impression to Golden Leaf for the things that we need for the county.
Yes, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. French. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. We do need to have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 145 and 6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. Now, make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.